Good afternoon and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's post agenda for Wednesday, October 27th, relative to Bill 2021 1867. Bring this mic a little closer. Will the clerk please read the title of the bill?
Bill 1867, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title V Traffic Article 7 Parking Chapter 549 Residential Parking Permit Program. So as to clarify the administrative process for the program, provide for virtual permitting, add the permit fees to the city's annual fee book, adopt regulations for the use of visitor permits and non-resident permits, and create the hybrid RPP area program.
Thank you. Thank you, Louise. For the record, we are joined today by council members Kraus, Rose, and Strasburg. So I think just to start this off, we're going to have Director Dash give a short presentation. This is a presentation that... Yeah, and for the record, we also have Director Honorato from the Parking Authority, Director Dash, and Gwendolyn Bolden from the Parking Authority as well.
All right, and just an overview of the bill. I'll try to brief around changes to Chapter 549 of the city's code around residential permit parking. The program itself is a program that was created in 1981 to provide residents within a designated area, you know, an opportunity to park closer to their homes. We have created a series of areas throughout the city. There are 39 residential permit parking areas that all have to meet specific criteria to be designated as residential permit parking. Are typically residential areas that are located near a non-residential impactor, so a commercial district, hospital, an institution, you know, universities are things that are generally adjacent to the residential permit parking areas across the city, those 39 areas. So presently, the role of the Department of City Planning for the city of Pittsburgh, as well as the Pittsburgh Parking Authority, so where the Parking Authority handles the permitting, you know, for residential permit parking, the enforcement of RPP areas. City Planning manages the designation of areas and the overall code and legislation of the program. Part of the discussion was around the transference of those duties from the Department of City Planning. And so as a part of that, we did take a deeper look at the code to really start to try to address things that we were hearing from the public, common themes that we were hearing about the program that needed to be amended, as well as making sure that we were updating the program from an administration standpoint as we were making that change. So back in March and April, the city released a survey on the EngagePGH platform to, you know, be able to understand from residents, you know, some of those things that we had heard, using that as a way to confirm those or to see that residents felt differently. For a month and a half, we did, you know, have that survey open. We did receive approximately 2,400 responses from residents as a part of that process. After that survey concluded, we then worked to, you know, to create and introduce amendments as a part of that. We did two public meetings earlier this month in October, I believe on the 5th and 6th of October, or the 4th and 5th, I can't recall, you know, two days in a row, one virtual, one in person, to be able to introduce the amendments, give a longer version of this presentation, and answer questions and take questions from the public. And then on, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting dates, I believe it's November 4th, we have a city council public hearing that will take place, and that is scheduled for this amendment. So the, you know, again, that, you know, that, that, that public engagement was a 26-question survey. Most of the people who did respond were existing, you know, people who live in an existing permit parking area. And so the five kind of major themes of changes, and I won't get into the details, you know, here, but, you know, were around clarifying the process for the designation of new districts, including creating new opportunities for new districts to be graded. Presently, in the code, the only opportunity is through a resident-driven petition. There are issues of equity around that, you know, as to, you know, who can, you know, kind of work to do that petition process. There were other issues, and so we did introduce additional ways for the process to start to either designate or change the existing residential permit parking areas. We adopted or proposed adopting new regulations for non-resident permits. So there were a number of items that consistently came up from residents as to permits that they wanted to be able to see in their district. Things like allowing contractors to get short-term permits to park in, you know, to park in an RPP area while, you know, while they're working on a resident house, a residence house. Caretakers either of children or of infirm, you know, you know, adults, that they would have the opportunity to be able to get permits to park within an area, you know, or, you know, you know. So, you know, the idea was that there are some of those areas where there are people that are using, you know, and being, you know, needing to park in one of these areas for longer than the typical grace period, and wanted to create a mechanism for them to do so. Another item was the introduction of a different type of residential permit parking area, which were hybrid, which were termed hybrid RPP areas. What this would allow is it would allow for certain residential permit parking areas to actually, instead of having a grace period where non-residents could park for free in that residential permit parking area, that it would change it so that the Parking Authority could create, you know, could create areas where people have to pay for parking during that grace period. Again, people who live in that residential permit parking area and have a permit would be able to park for free. People with these non-resident permits would be able to park for free. But people coming into that district, instead of parking, you know, getting a free grace period to be able to park in the area would have to pay. You know, which was really trying to address an issue of, especially around a lot of our, you know, kind of, you know, around stadiums or larger institutions or others where people are searching for free parking and going into residential district, even if it is for a short period of time. And then those residential permit parking areas would only be able to be designated as such if approved by city council. The last thing to discuss, which was not necessarily a part of the ordinance, but as a part of the discussion, is moving the, you know, being more progressive about the pay structure for residential permits. The present, you know, the present charge for a permit is $20, and, you know, that is, you know, people can purchase as many permits for residents as they desire. So looking at a progressive fee structure so that if the first, you know, the first permit is, you know, just $25, and the next permit would be $50, et cetera, to, you know, to try to discourage, you know, some of the places where people are getting a large number of permits for a resident to be able to think about ways to more equitably use the on-street parking that we have across the city. Those were the major components of change. The city does have, under its EngagePGH website, has a page specifically around this amendment. In that, on that page, we have not only the proposed code, we have a recording of the virtual public meeting that we did, so people can go through that. We have the presentation, the full presentation that we gave on that site as well, as well as we've, since those meetings have generated a frequently asked questions document that was based off of the questions that we heard at the public meetings. So all of that is available on the EngagePGH website for people who may want to see more information on the amendment and on the discussions that have happened around that amendment.
Right, thank you, Director. At this point, I'll turn it over to members. I'll turn over the order that they arrived, I guess. Councilman Kraus, you have any questions?
Councilman Wilson, can I just add one thing?
Yes, please.
That's what I was gonna do is offer you up.
The only thing I would add to that is the, as part of the change, the existing permits would, areas would all be renewed, automatically renewed going forward. And they'd have to take action to decertify them, so for anything to change, that was the number one priority, that council would automatically renew all the existing RPP zones, and then they would automatically be renewed unless the neighborhoods came to whoever to decertify the process.
I'm sorry, with the passage of this ordinance, with the passage of this legislation, automatic renewal of all existing RPP areas would take place.
That was the intent, yes.
It is within the legislation, yes. So all 39 existing RPP areas would, you know, would automatically, you know, be renewed as a part of that, and then future changes to those areas would be in accordance with the ordinance. And so if someone were looking to change, you know, you know, either expand or contract the boundary of an RPP area, or if they wanted to change the hours or those kinds of things, then it would be in accordance with the ordinance, but that it would essentially formalize all 39 RPP areas moving forward that exist into, but then future changes, like I said, would take place in accordance with the new code.
So, hi Gwen, welcome. David, welcome. So...
Apologize, we thought we were on a Zoom meeting, but we didn't have a connection.
Oh, you're good.
You're good.
You're late.
Yeah, no, you're good. So first, I'm just sort of kind of interested about what your thoughts are about absorbing the RPP program into the Parking Authority, just generally speaking, what your thoughts might be, and then number two, what kind of additional resources you might need to be able to bear that, the burden of that responsibility?
We've been in discussion with City Planning and Andrew Dash, but our last discussions, it was, I guess, our understanding, when you can, if you want, is that DOME would be involved too. They would be in the process, still in the process of designation or codes and policies, because my understanding, at the end, planning commission, the final version, if any new one would have to go to the planning commission, and then ultimately presented to city council for approval. So, you know, with, I'm not sure of clear of the duties yet between the Parking Authority and DOME that would be distributed.
That would be very helpful, to be able to have clear delineation of responsibility, which is outlined in the ordinance.
Well, so that's, so far that's been the discussion, but we do have, I believe, I'm not sure if she's online, the acting director, Kim Lucas.
And I believe also...
I can't see the panelists on the... Yeah, but, I mean, it should be mentioned that in these discussions, since DOME manages the curb side, that they have expressed interest in getting involved to relieve some of the responsibilities.
So in terms of resource, additional responsibilities that you'll be carrying, you'll need additional enforcement officers, I imagine, different, what's the word I'm looking for, staffing to, you know, bring the program over, set it up, get it launched?
Right, but that's really not a question that we can answer yet until we know the responsibility. If it's shifting to the Parking Authority, or if it's shifting to DOME. We understand that it would be easier for us to really identify what would be necessary. If it's a DOME transition, then our role pretty much stays the same, and it just goes to City Planning. Authority to DOME's authority, and we'll still be enforcers.
But just to jump in here to answer your question, until Director Lucas would join us, in conversations with her, and during our meetings, she's expressed that an additional staff person would be needed. You know, in DOME, or, you know, if for some reason there are responsibilities that would rely on, you know, either way, there's gonna be one staff that would be added.
I think part of the legislation, Andrew, if I'm mistaken, you can correct, is the fee structure would be taken out of the legislation, and they would be submitted through the city budget processes fees, as they're normally...
The fee schedule.
The fee schedule. And we did anticipate if it was changed, that the fees would also be changed for the 2022 budget year. But nothing has been submitted to the city for new fees.
Okay.
Yes.
For a permit. I like this idea of a structured fee or a progressive fee structure. I do like that.
We had proposed and talked to with the city, currently it's $20 a year, as Andrew stated, for the permit. And we were looking to make that $40 per permit for the year, for the first two permits issued to a household. The third one would be $100 per year, the fourth one would be $200 per year, and each additional one would be $200 per year. And a visitor's pass would go from a dollar per year to $20 per year. And then we have fee proposals for the new permit, or the contractors would be $10 per week, and landlords would be $25 per month.
Yeah, so I don't want to drill too far into the minutia of, I'm not ready to say, oh yeah, I think that fee structure is perfect, that's exactly what we should do.
I just wanted to make you aware there was a change.
Yeah, but conceptually speaking, I think that is, I really like that, I really want to consider how best to do that. We have, you know, everybody has anecdotal information about, you know, parking in the neighborhood, but there's a few people that I'm personally aware of that, you know, have seven and eight, nine cars on the street, you know, and they're all identified with one household and so forth and so on. So I do think that's a, I think that is a really good idea, I like that. And I especially like the idea of creating specific categories for contractors, caregivers, and there was a third one beyond landlords, which that's another conversation.
Yeah, so it was medical non-residents, that was like a medical caretaker, contractors, childcare permits, for people that were, you know, and then the fourth of those was the landlord non-resident.
So let's leave the landlord out for this, for the sake of not getting too marred on in that minutia, because you, we shared a lot of that at the public meeting where we were, but that was a difficult situation. But I do, I especially like the idea of categorizing and creating permits for caregiving, however you might want to define that, whether it's medical or child or contractor, I think is a good way to go. And I think the progressive fee structure could apply there as well, too. I'm not sure if, you know, we want to be more forgiving in terms of cost for someone that is truly there on a medical care of an elderly, you know, parent or, you know, family member, or whatever the case may be, or ongoing consistent childcare, where you need, your child's in the home and somebody needs to be there and have a space in that. The contractor, I was a little more, creating fees, I shouldn't have my back against you, the fees for contractor was a little more confusing for me in that we had some discussion, correct me if I'm wrong, about them being associated with a building permit? That would be sort of the qualifier to get a permit as a contractor?
That's correct, because I think the understanding was that for, you know, for people who are coming in and doing small work in a house that wouldn't necessarily require a permit, you're having a room painted or having carpet installed or something like that, that there may be something that, you know, that use, the use of the visitor pass would be, you know, a common usage there. But that there was a need, if you're having more major work that's being done and associated with a building permit, that the requirements of the visitor pass would, you know, wouldn't, wouldn't work in a case like that. And that there was a need for contractors that may be doing longer jobs, you know, on, you know, on a property that a resident is, you know, looking to see those improvements made to their house, that we wanted to be able to allow a way for them to be able to, you know, to be able to park in the RPP area during the time that they're working on that job.
So structuring that, those new kinds of permits and permissions, we haven't quite decided where that falls, that will most likely, or we think it could be a hybrid perhaps, or that could fall within the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure part, that could possibly fall within the authority of the Parking Authority, or it could lie entirely within the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure, and the Parking Authority would assume its present responsibility of strictly being the enforcement agent.
Well, for those permits, likely, those permits would be granted by the Parking Authority, the same as they would manage you, you know, a resident getting their residential permit, or a resident managing their visitor's pass. So, yeah, so those permits, those new permits, if they're approved by city council, or however they're approved by city council, would then be administered by the Parking Authority. I think some of the discussions of Director Honorato and Gwen at the Parking Authority was around some of the management of changes to overall districts and to kind of the map of areas, you know, would be things that may be those responsibilities, whether those are at the Parking Authority or at the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure, would be, you know, that's, that's kind of the relationship, I think, that they were talking about.
What's consistent?
Gwen, can you stick into the mic?
Yeah, you have to grab the microphone, Gwen.
Thank you.
Yeah.
What's consistent with the issuance of permits with the Parking Authority is that generally, anytime there's a permit that's issued for a residential parking area, that comes through the Parking Authority. If it's an area that doesn't have parking identified, so we're not taking a metered space out of the system, that would be with the Parking Authority, and it's not a residential area, then those other permits would go through DOME, through PLI for the issuance of the permit. So this would still be consistent with that same practice.
And please jump in, don't, not, yeah, no, no, please do. The, my question is probably not clear enough. So the administration of the permit is one thing, the creation of the structure of the permit, and how we're gonna actually do that, are we gonna, is that gonna be through the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to devise that system by which we would create these permits?
So we... Yeah, we say, we say permit, but it's not an actual permit. We are still looking at virtual permits with the license plate being the criteria.
I'm still not asking the question correctly. I'm talking about who's gonna actually create the system by which these permits can exist, and how they're going to be defined.
So maybe I'll try to answer that, and then if others want to follow. The code is, the code is actually, and the change outlined in the code are these different types of permits and the allowance, and what these different types of permits are and what they can do. So we're outlining them in the changes to the code that have, that have come to city council. And city council ultimately will be the ones to determine, you know, to say yes or no, that, you know, in the code, we want to, we want to outline these different categories of permits. Once that has been done, once council, you know, if council were to approve that, then those permits would be ones that, you know, if someone were to apply for those permits, those would all go through the Parking Authority, the same as existing, you know, existing visitor passes and permits are handled by the Parking Authority.
Currently, we do the enforcement and the issuing of the permits today.
Right.
Thank you, I forgot myself. Look, Gwen, I'm out of product, I'm rusty. There will be the same, it's happening, the permitting is happening in the same place. It's just that there will be now new types of permits issued.
That's correct.
Right, and so I will be, I don't, maybe I should jump in here, may I? I have, you may recall, Gwen, I think you might have been handling there, but it might have been actually before you were handling. I had to appeal on behalf of a constituent of mine for permits to medical caregivers in friendship, and I think Mr. Honorato will recall. And so I do have some suggestions for changing that Section 549.08, subsection B1, the medical non-resident permits. So my constituent had to call us because she couldn't get visitors' permits issued for probably six license plate numbers, because in her house, or she cares for a medically, her medically fragile child who needs 24-hour care, and so in order to survive. And so in trying to get those caregivers, they're coming from all over Allegheny County. She has a pretty high turnover, and it was exacerbating her difficulties in always being able to have a caregiver in her home, that they were always getting parking tickets. And they, she couldn't get, the visitor's permit system was not adequate, because you can only have it for three days, you have to wait, you have to reapply. And so we had to get a letter from her doctor. And so we got that letter from her doctor, but it was still rejected because the doctor didn't have the license plates of each of the caregivers. But there's a constantly changing host of caregivers, right? And no one's doctor knows people's license plates numbers. And so that was really distressing for the family. It took many weeks for us to resolve it. We did finally resolve it. And it really helped her and her child have more stable caregivers, because they could get permits for their license plate numbers. But it was, I think, an unacceptable requirement for her doctor to know those license plate numbers, to be able to provide a letter and be the authority over people's license plates numbers. And then, and that the application for those permits was rejected because the doctor didn't know, you know, the independent caregiver she's hiring from Brentwood's license plate number, and how can that doctor attest to it? So I think that's an undue burden. And so, you know, we can talk more about how we can prevent, we know there's fraud. God knows, I've had, I know there's fraud, and there has been a longstanding tradition of a black market visitor's pass system around our hospitals in the city especially, that has been, you know, you know, probably reduced because of the changes to the visitor's pass system from having the old cards, what people would sell basically in the black market, and decals and things like that. So I know that there needs to be some verification and some system that you can feel confident in, but it shouldn't be so burdensome that people can't, you know, we need, you can't, you can't get a doctor to call you back. You can't get a doctor to send you an email, and then to think that these doctors are somehow magically gonna know people's and attest to the driver's license numbers.
Can I jump in for just one second? Councilwoman is making the point I was trying to make, but not answering the question. Well, these are gonna be matters of policy. Once we create, I understand, we'll create by passing, but then how they're actually implemented and systems are created, that will be a matter of policy by which these will become effective and actually serving people with the needs that they have for the caretakers coming into their, to their neighborhoods. Will the creation of the policy then exist within one of the departments, once we, once we pass the legislation?
It's codified, this one's codified here.
I was just saying.
Exactly.
And I don't like that.
What's being discussed is, and, you know, be happy to have further discussions with you, and, you know, I think from the departments and authorities on our side, relative, I mean, I think that one of the things that we end up having to have is we have to have a license plate number to, you know, to be able to, to, you know, have the plate readers be able to know who is able to be in a zone and who's not. And so, you know, I mean, if there are other ways to be able to make sure that we're getting that plate information to ensure that the Parking Authority can issue the permit, I think that's something that we're, you know, willing to have, you know, able to have follow-up conversations to, you know, to get that language.
Thank you. And I also wanted to just, if I may shift, I also think that the creation of these categories is something that we've been talking about now for a number of years. So it is wonderful to see it coming to fruition now, that there should be, I know, a special designation for contractors or for childcare providers and all that kind of stuff. It's been, we've known we'd needed this for quite a while, and it's going to really alleviate some of the stress and strain on the households who have been trying to juggle this stuff with visitor's passes that weren't quite, you know, designed for that. So that part, I think, is helpful, and I'm sure we'll be able to figure out a way to do that. I did also want to point out to people that a lot about the kind of process by which the maps are created, I think also speaks to some of your questions, councilman, about what are the new systems or costs that are being created with this change to code. new systems or costs that are being created with this, um, change to code. Um, so I'm glad, um, we have DOMI here at the table. Thank you, Director. Um, we are seeing, I don't think this used to happen, that there was really kind of a parking study. Did I, was there a, a version of parking study that happened when we credited new parking areas? Is it just shifting? And so do, let's, if we could talk a little bit about what that cost is in kind of dollars to operate, but then the kind of time costs, like what, what, what is the, how long does it take? Or in the process, like, so a dollar cost and a time cost?
Sure. So, um, I mean, a parking study is required in the current system and would continue to be required as a part of the designation of new permanent parking areas. Um, so the things that we, the things that that parking study has to determine is, it has to determine that at least uh, seventy-five percent of the parking in an area is being utilized, and that at least fifteen percent of that, that parking is being utilized by commuters, by people who are not residents of the area. And so uh, the parking study that is done presently and would continue to be done, would be done for that purpose. It is not something that we, those parking studies are done by exist, you know, by staff in the existing system. Um, so there is, you know, I mean, there is a staff, there is a staff cost to that, uh, because we do have to go out during all of the hours that would, you know, that would, that a district would, you know, would be intending on existing. So for, just as an example, because it's a one that we're doing right now, um, there is a petition for a block of South Eighteenth Street in the South Side to become a part of, of a permit district. We have to go out for every hour that that permit district would be in place and be able to document, you know, what, you know, how, what parking utilization is like, and who's parking, who's parking on that block. And so we have to do that, include that as a part of the parking study, that then will determine if that area is eligible to be added to a residential permanent parking area. But i- if that helps, yeah, kind of give you an understanding of what that parking study entails and.
Your current example would qualify as a minor expansion under this code?
That's, yes, that's, that's what, that's what, that, that's what that one, but that parking study, whether that's creation of an entirely new district, or whether it's a minor, that one block minor expansion like I'm talking about on, in the South Side, um, you know, that same, those same things are needed out of the parking study, uh, for a resident, for a residential permanent parking area.
And so I, I, I have to ask, because I don't know, um, and that's what these things are for, um, how much do you oversell curb length? So we know that there's a certain amount of curb length. I know you measure in an RPP. And I know that we seem to, up till today, just kind of, there's no limit on permits.
That is correct.
So it's like an unlimited number of car length that is permitted. And the, the curb, actual existing curb length in an RPP area is finite and known.
Yes.
I'm, I'm imagining RPP areas that have like a, um, less disparate ratio of curb length to vehicle length permitted. And then I'm imagining RPP areas that have like a really super disparate, maybe by factors and multiples of curb length to number lengths of car permitted. Just, do you have any, do you know what's kind of on the ground happening up right now?
Yeah, I mean, we haven't, we haven't done this off of recent data, but the last time we did this, I mean, so we have about eighteen thousand permits, uh, roughly that, you know, in, in residential permanent parking areas. Um, we have some areas where the impactor is the problem, right? You know, but, you know, but ultimately there are more on-street spaces than there are permits or cars. So we have
Given, but.
We have, we have any, the, I think the lowest of those districts comes in at about three permits per ten on-street parking spaces. Uh, it's like at the bottom end, um, you know, where for every ten on-street parking spaces, we have three permits in that.
There's literally less car length than curb length?
There's, there's less, there's less, there's many, much less in the way of permits than we actually have on-street parking spaces in those residential.
That's amazing. I didn't even think that.
But, but that the impactor would be so, so great that, you know, it would be overtaken by non-residential parking if, if residential permanent parking did not exist. On the other side, um, I think it's area DD, um, you know, we actually have, where we have, uh, you know, about four and a half permits for every on-street parking space. And so when we were looking at amending the code, I mean, there are some places that get to doing lottery systems and capping the number of permits in an area. Um, however, however, at the same time, we chose not to do that because
Where it impacts the fees.
Because there, because there's also issues that, you know, although there are, there may be four and a half permits per on-street parking space in that RBP area, there are also lots of people that have off-street, you know, there are lots of off-street parking, you know, that, you know, that obviously has to be in, included in that as well.
Or, or they have less commuters or non-permitted parking.
And, and that the, the main, the, the main role of the program is to protect that residential area from the commercial im- impactors outside of it, you know, not, you know, it's, it's not, the program itself isn't meant to kind of control residential parking from other residences and on the, you know, on the same block and some of those issues.
So as a resident of DD.
I just did some housekeeping items.
I'm sorry, of course.
Yeah, I just want to mention, um, for our member, um, Strasburg Online, we're kind of, you know, jumping around here. I just want to make sure that you feel included as well, if you want to jump in at some point. Um, but, you know, with these questions, we're, we've kind of, you know, create, create like a conversation thing here.
Yeah, she's frozen.
Okay, frozen. Well, then, that. Okay, all right, we'll keep going.
Again, I'm not sure exactly how to, to make the statement or ask the question, but the ratio of car length to permit would fluctuate according to time of day, would it not? There, I come out in the morning and there's ample parking. Come, if I'm not home by five thirty or six o'clock, I'm circling. So how, how, how then does one factor that into the equation of available permits, car lengths, according to time of day?
Well, and that's, and that's why we chose not to, you know, I mean, that, that's why we chose to continue the current system as opposed to trying to cap the number of permits in a district.
Yeah, I don't think.
Is that, is that really, you know, I mean, really it is to try to protect the, this, those, those residential streets as residential parking, but not necessarily dealing with the fact that there may be more, you know, especially in some of our older rowhouse neighborhoods, more units and, you know, and potentially, you know, if all of those people have cars, more cars than we have, than we have on-street parking spaces. And, you know, like, it, you know, that, that would be things that, you know, obviously other, you know, we try to handle in other ways, um, you know, whether that's by, you know, anything from, you know, work that the Parking Authority does, you know, relative to creating, you know, to creating parking, to trying to find other means of, you know, of transportation in those areas, um, you know, et cetera.
And encouraging vehicle reduction, which is entirely, you know, another conversation. I, I'm just not convinced. I like the idea of capping permits and creating lottery systems. That's just, and I'm sort of off the cuff and we're just beginning discussions around this, but I, I just don't see where that is, is going to be beneficial.
And, and we agree with you, which is why it wasn't something that was ultimately, why, why it was not something that was ultimately proposed.
Okay, we're in agreement with you too on that. But once it's, uh, area is, uh, approved or designated as an RPP area, we sell a permit to every resident that comes in and applies for it, is eligible. And sometimes, uh, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Gross is correct, sometimes they're oversold in certain areas because they're entitled to them, but with this program, they're not entitled to park, they're not guaranteed to park on their street. There's several streets in that district that, you know, they may and have to go to a different street, but a lot of, uh, residents want on their street or it's an issue.
Oakland all the time, south and central Oakland, get it all the time.
And it is about half the districts, so about twenty of the thirty-nine districts, I believe, have more permits sold than there are parking, on-street parking spaces. But again, you know, how that gets regulated throughout the day and through different times that residents are there doesn't mean that it's necessarily, uh, you know, doesn't mean that necessarily a one-to-one would, would really mean that, you know, if, if it's over that limit, that, you know, people can't, don't have the ability to park.
In times of year, I would argue as well.
A resident doesn't care if there is parking in their zone. It's three blocks away from their house. What they want is the parking that's right in front of them.
Parking chairs.
And the, uh, but we can't guarantee that, obviously.
And I believe the remote working from home component is a problem.
Because the cars are staying there now, not moving.
Yeah, we agree.
That along with a lot of the single-family homes being turned into rental properties that now, instead of housing a family, it houses three or four different tenants that all bring fuss.
You know that problem very well.
Which is where the, things like the progressive fee schedule, you know, come into play to at least have people think, you know, that there is, there, since there is more of a financial choice before, you know, they're getting a third, you know, a second or a third permit, um, you know, for, for residents.
Yeah.
That brings us to, um, the, um, idea of this hybrid, um, model. And I can think of some areas in my district where they're already, like we've, we've been having to do this weird thing where we try to draw the RPP around the meters and it was awkward, you know, so you think of like Area H that has kind of Friendship Avenue with meters right on it, right behind West Penn Hospital. Right? And I used to live there. And actually, we, we used the accommodation that I'm reading in this ordinance a lot because I, you know, it was just like four houses down and you could be at a meter, right? So if I didn't have my parking pass, back then I had a physical parking pass. And it was like, ah, you know, it's like last friend who was over two days ago, drove home with it and hasn't gotten it back to me. But you could just drive around the corner and park at a parking meter. Um, right? But not everybody has that.
That's not my understanding of the program.
But if, if someone's driven to Bloomfield, they can park at a parking meter and pay.
Yes.
That was the option that I had because I lived so close to parking.
That's, that won't change.
Well, of course it won't change because you can just park at a parking meter if you want to and pay a parking meter.
So the idea is created opposite from what you're stating. Um, so the idea is those, those permit holders are allowed to park in their parking areas, those visitors that are coming to their areas. And I'm going to use the example of a hospital because that's where we see a lot of the, the, the misuse of permits. Rather than parking in paid parking or buying a parking permit that the hospital may offer, they would rather park three blocks away in that residential area, not pay for a meter, but park for free in the residential area. So in creating the hybrid, we're looking at a way of how can we then charge those folks that are parking in those residential areas where it's got two-hour parking, and they're taking the chance on, okay, I can park my car here for two hours. I know enforcement is going to come out maybe at eight o'clock, so by ten o'clock, my, my tires might be chopped or electronically. Um, I've got to move my car by noon, and if enforcement isn't out there, then I'm still good. I can take the chance.
I, I think I do understand what you're saying, and I am fully supportive. It doesn't change the fact that you would also still have the option, if you're in the city of Pittsburgh, to park at a parking meter and pay the parking meter.
Yes.
Yes, yes. So yes, that's good.
That's a.
That's good. So I, I didn't say anything that was critical of it, and, and, and so we are saying the same thing.
Permit wouldn't be honored in a meter.
Yes. Yes. And so that is, as, I'm just saying as an example.
We're, we're all talking meters, but our intent, if we move forward and council approves it, would be that the payment would be paid by phone app and not, we wouldn't be placing meters in residential neighborhoods.
Oh, so they wouldn't, how would you know then?
That we're, by signage.
So you would only, you would have to use the phone app?
Yes.
Or they could walk to the closest meter.
Yeah, yeah. No, but so we've been needing this for a long time.
If I could just, um, give a, you know, add a point here. The way I've liked to think about the, or the hybrid system that would possibly work, for instance, in Bloomfield, is those main street spots are, are open for people that are using the main street. And they go, you know, I'm not saying anything you don't already know, that, you know, they go a block or two blocks back and park in that neighborhood, and they're going to the main street. I think the option here is to, if the neighborhood wants it, and the councilperson would, you know, push for it in that, in their district, that you could expand the, the, you know, the, the payment.
Yes, I, I fully understand.
Yeah.
And I'm fully supportive. I'm just saying it, it works both ways. So we are certainly have needed to be sure that the hospital workers, in my district, that's what it is. I'm sure it's very similar and, yep. Well, it's actually West Penn and Children's go so close together. It's a double whammy. Um, so that, um, yeah, it's a constant stress on the neighborhood that the, the medical, uh, the hospital workers find the, find spots and nooks and crannies that are parking and taking up those curb lengths. So, um, yeah, so this has been something I know we've talked about for many, many years.
I think the other, uh, possibility to alleviate that issue would be increasing the fine for the person who's illegally parking in the RPP zone because, uh, if you park there every day and you don't get caught, it still could be cheaper with the fees today than paying for a monthly, uh, garage at the hospital and that. So they'll take their chances and pay the parking tickets because it's less expensive than pulling into the garage on a daily basis, uh, just because of our fee structure.
So you're making, so it would be a more, a higher fine to be at the expired meter than it is to be parking?
Higher fine in the RPP zone if you're parked illegally, not the meters.
Got it. But that's currently happening to me because they're, they're parking in Area H on the side streets in a RPP zone.
Right. I'm just saying the fine, if they're caught, should be higher than it is now. I believe it's forty-five dollars.
You are changing the fines. So you are going to be changing the fines.
The signs?
The fines.
Signs? Well, that would have to be approved by the city, uh, on their fee structure.
I didn't catch it here. So would, that would be another thing in the fee structure?
No, that, that was pulled out of the legislation intentionally.
Okay, that's, I'm glad I asked, but I will, I'm still going to maintain that you cut me off before, let me finish my thought, and that it works also to the resident's advantage when they have visitors because they can just pay it as with a cash app, with the parking app, right? So it's especially helpful. Um, but it also, I think, is, is fantastic that we are adjusting the ordinance so that we can address this. Well, it has been just a constant bane in a lot of these neighborhoods, which is like those large employment centers parking all throughout the RPP. So I know a lot of people who will be happy and hope that this part works. But I was also trying to get to, there's two things here, right? So the hybrid model, and then I see on the same page in the section just above it, that there's, uh, it mentions dynamic hours. Um, and so help us because that raises the specter of dynamic pricing, which we only have in South Side. But we were promised seven years ago that we were going to have more of it, and we, can you speak to the dynamic hours and the dynamic pricing?
Are you referring to the PED?
No, I'm saying in this bill, it says dynamic hours. Um, is, is something you're creating that we don't have now?
Price associated with demand.
Yeah, so what.
That's pricing. This is dynamic hours, so.
Yeah, and so what that is, is, um, you know, so obviously there are, you know, certain hours in which, uh, you know, the Parking Authority enforcement officers typically work. Um, and that, you know, it to, you know, and, and so we tend, tend to typically have, uh, you know, Gwen can correct me if I'm wrong here. It's like nine AM to seven PM is, is, is the general hours of most of our districts, uh, with a one-to-two-hour grace period. Um, you know, with the hybrid areas, what it's saying is that if people were looking to have nighttime enforcement, for example, with one of those hybrid areas, that it would be associated with, uh, you know, with a PED, or, you know, that, that, you know, that, you know, that there would be some way to then be able to generate additional revenue, um, you know, that goes towards helping to offset some of those costs for nighttime enforcement of a potential hybrid district if that were to take place.
Yeah, so that's, that's great because we've been talking about, um, I always like to acknowledge that, um, Lawrenceville has not gotten its PED, that it thought it deserved before South Side, and it's been years. It's been years, and we had promised to work on it a, at the beginning of twenty twenty. It was on our policy calendar to do and make sure it happened in twenty twenty, but then, you know, a global pandemic happened, so that still hasn't happened. So we are going to be talking to you about, um, that very shortly, probably for the strip and Lawrenceville. And so it will have some, I think the dynamic hours gets us to that increment that we're looking for, for revenue, right? With the dynamic pricing also, and I believe you do have dynamic pricing in the South Side, do you not?
We do not have it enforced, is that correct? It is eligible for, but we don't. It is eligible for, but we don't, um, issue it. Right, right now during the day, uh, there's, there's, uh, plenty of utilization spaces that we don't need to increase it. In the PED, we just set a standard rate and that's enforced during those hours.
It doesn't have to fluctuate, you know, every minute, but still, but you can kind of, you have the authority because we gave it to you to assess occupancy, um, or, you know, parking demand and then say whether or not the price should be higher.
Would need, uh, recommendation to the city finance director who would have to approve it, then we could do it.
Oh, I forgot how we structured that, but yeah, we did that back in 2015 or 20, so yeah, so I think that's also interesting. Um, but I don't see the pricing part referred to here, but it's still on the books and so we can still do that. It doesn't, there's nothing here that puts a different obstacle in the way or anything like that.
I believe so.
That's excellent. Good, good to know. So we will probably be, be talking a lot more with you, um, soon here as we're kind of getting back to business as usual and parking is coming back, um, parking pressure is coming back.
Traffic is coming.
Traffic is insane and please everyone slow down and stop driving so aggressively on the city streets. Um, so I, but I just wanted to highlight those couple of things and.
So at the risk of opening up a huge can of worms at the end of it all?
I actually have some.
Maybe we could tailor this, but to go down the, the road of this landlord permit, you know, there was significant pushback to the, the suggestion of this in Oakland and from Oakland residents about someone that might own substantive rental property and the kind of permits they might be able to acquire and, and the, uh, the vehicle fleets they might have and how that could, could really, really add significant impact to, uh, already challenged areas like South Oakland and Central. Down that road.
Sure.
I'm, I'm not feeling it, but, um, you know, I, I would like to know more about it.
Sure, so, uh, what was, what was outlined and proposed, um, you know, it was something that in the survey, we did get mixed result, you know, mixed responses, uh, from, you know, from primarily residents in permit, in permit areas, but there was definitely something that came up as, uh, you know, that has come up to, I think, a number of us as a consistent need, um, that, you know, that landlords who own properties within a residential parking area are doing things that are typically longer than, you know, the grace period and, uh, you know, in a permit parking district. So, you know, that, you know, if they are cleaning out a unit, if they're doing maintenance, if there are those things, that it is something that typically lasts for longer than one or two hours in a district. And that presently there is no way for a landlord to get a permit for a district except to ask for an exemption from the parking authority. And so, uh, we would, we did want to try to create a structure for there to be the ability for that to take place. I think we wanted to, um, you know, put a higher fee to, you know, to those types of permits, so it wasn't something that, you know, that got, you know, that we tried to minimize exploitation of it, um, while allowing for the opportunity for that to take place. And so, you know, if that is the, you know, if, you know, the way it was proposed in the, in the code amendments that were sent to city council was that if they are documenting ownership, if they are documenting, um, you know, through listings and otherwise that, you know, they have property that is listed as rental property, um, and they provide registration cards for the vehicles that, you know, that, you know, they, you know, that they're, they're business owns, um, you know, that they would be able to have the opportunity to purchase a non-resident permit to be able to park in that district for those purposes. Um, so, you know, so that was, that was the intent, uh, that was the intent there was to allow for, you know, one of those activities that do go on in our residential districts typically during the daytime, um, because that's the time when most of our RPP areas are in, are, are in place. Um, but that, you know, was an activity that occurs for usually longer than that grace period, that one or two hours.
I just think I'd like to see it tailored more tightly than it is. And I, I just need some time with that to kind of digest, so I can understand the, I, I would, I guess I could argue every business owner would be able to argue some level of impact that they want to, can, you know, to, to tend to or manage their business in some way, shape or form. And then therefore they or their assigned agent, he or she should have qualification then for a permit because they're acting in their capacity and it just begins to snowball. Now perhaps we could tie it to the rental registry, the other way. Uh, but, you know, so I, I just, I'm a little, because, you know, the, the Realtors Association may not look as, at rental property as a business that should be licensed, uh, but I think we do. Um, and I'm, I'm just afraid that it could become unyielding and really begin to take a life of its own.
I think one of the areas that we tried to cover in that was currently, this is handled through the variance process where someone can call and say, I need a permit for this period of time and we've been issuing those up, up to a two week period, um, for someone doing work or something outside of the regular permit process. Um, so this was a way to identify those needs, um, a landlord, a nanny pass, if you will, and, um, those types of passes and really, one, can, control the use of them to make sure that they're not being overly utilized, um, and we're not putting free permits out.
Apparently they're all free, variances, we give any RPP district.
And, and to, to, I think, one of your, to one of your other statements, Councilman, um, and Gwen or Dave can correct me if I'm wrong here, but you know, if someone has a business in a residential permit parking area, they are allowed one permit present.
Did that.
So, you know, so, so, you know, you know, so because of, because of that, there is already a mechanism, if you're a business within a residential permit parking area to, you know, but, but if you're a landlord owning a property and then doing that work, there is presently not a way for you to get a permit except for that exemption.
For a landlord owning multiple properties in multiple, multiply defined areas.
Every RPP, one landlord who has got units in every RPP.
Exactly. And, um, uh, and, uh, multiple, uh, uh, people serving as their agents and then it just, it just, and it has the tendency to really, really snowball. So I, I understand and, but I, I'd like to see it tightened up.
Okay. I think, yeah, if there are suggestions that you have, we can also take that back and try to look at that.
This is a good time though for me to ask my one question, which is, a lot of my residents were, uh, you know, asking this question, will this regulate Airbnb parking?
It's becoming a concern now.
Or does it fall under the landlord, um, permit?
I mean, I, I maybe lean to the parking authority as to how they address that now. I mean, you know, I mean, that.
Yeah, let's talk about it.
It wouldn't be a residence under, uh, you know, under the code, so I don't know how that's being handled presently.
Currently those are identified as, uh, visitors and they are giving, given variances for the time.
Free variances.
Mm-hmm.
Yes. We had, we faced that a lot with the morning glory at one time, which is, uh, you know, wonderful, that practice and space, so forth and so on. And they were, they were being hampered by.
So just for clarity, so if currently there's no, if you, if I own an Airbnb in Butchtown, there's no, I just call in and get a variance on property? I currently already pay some fee?
You don't pay a fee for it.
Okay. And this, I mean, under this, what we're talking about is landlord permit? I mean, how would that operate? That would at least charge 250?
N- no, the Airbnb was not listed as a separate permit. The landlord permit is only for, uh, you know, like a landlord, the landlord's company or, you know, maintenance vehicles or things like that, that would be under a company that they would want to get a permit.
How do you suggest, any suggestions on regulating Airbnb parking?
I think it should be paid parking, um, just like our, our meter parking. If there's an Airbnb in the area, it should be part of the hybrid areas where we're looking at how they pay for those.
So, uh, Airbnb exists in an already defined RPP area. Participant is going to park in the residential area.
One thing that we've kind of kicked around in, in, in our areas is looking, looking at those RB, RB and Airbnb, uh, areas and having the owners register as an Airbnb, um, and then having a special rate that's identified for those people that are staying and using. But the address would have to be in our system as an Airbnb and that there would be a cost associated with them registering as an Airbnb.
Because what happens right now is they, they run out of their property for the weekend or whatever, and then when the, uh, customer comes up and parks, we tag them, but the landlord never informs them that, you know, the requirements for parking. We think dealing with the landlord on the front end would be a much. So not to take us off subject, just a little bit at this question earlier, uh, being identified, being shared the information that you are in a hybrid area and you have to pay. Let's say we create these hybrid areas and they, they come to fruition in already existing RPP areas, how are we going, are we going to sign that says this is a, an area by which you must, you know, pay? Is that going to be part of the RPPs?
I have an example right here.
That's great.
I just, it just cleared up.
Can I, clarification in the hybrid areas, it wouldn't be unlimited parking, there would still be two hours restrictions would still be in place.
Or whatever restriction is assigned to that.
You're just not getting it for free.
I like that idea.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I mean, like, you know, I'm, I'm definitely guilty in the past of going a block down and not paying, get my hair cut.
Just as an example, and I'm sorry, I can't, but you can see the sign that's there, um, you know, in one direction, it is permit parking and below that they have just like the number that you would put into the, into the, the, the app. Uh, this is an example from Columbus, Ohio, but, um, you know, where, where they, where they have a similar program to what would, what the hybrid areas would look like. And that's how, that's how they have those signed where they have, you know, this area is residential, i- is, is residential permit parking, but then they have, you know, underneath that, a, an additional sign that has, you know, that if you pay by the app, this is your zone and that you would, you would do it that way.
Oh, so these hybrid zones, I like to fly into this because this is the ma- ma- major concern of a couple of my, um, RPP districts, people that live in them. So why, and I just want to get this, you know, out, out there, is that if in our, i- if a hybrid zone is created, will there be, will you start installing parking meters in front of people's houses?
No.
I know the, answer the question, just one minute. And furthermore, if, like, how, how would that process work for a hybrid zone? What a community group say to the council person or can anyone come up with an idea of like, hey, I'd like to do this and then what's that process? I would bring that to the council table, I would work with DOME, how would that work?
I think so. If the community wanted to have that option to bring it to council or DOME or city planning now or the parking authority, I envision the parking authority recommend two or three of the areas we feel that it's needed today to council, to, you know, start to.
Okay, so right now you can identify like two or three that you're thinking of.
Yes. And to your question of what the process would be?
Yes.
Um, but i- there's a section of the code 54905 that was, that was proposed that, to be created, you know, just specifically to address, you know, if you are doing these kinds, kinds of amendments to a permit parking area. And so although it could be initiated by a city council member or by the parking authority, ultimately it would have to go through a review of the planning commission and, and approved by city council.
Okay, so who submits it to the planning commission?
Become a hybrid area.
Yeah.
City council would, would ultimately have, it would be the ones making that decision.
Who would, so it would, so I, so a council member or I guess, um, a department would send it over to our agenda and then we would send it to the planning commission?
No, usually, um, it would go through the planning commission process first. Um, I mean, even if it's, you know, I mean, you know, no matter who initiates that, just for their review and recommendation, but city council would be the one to ultimately determine whether or not they wanted to make that change. So those cha- those changes would be changes that city council would be ultimately determining.
And is there a public, like, hearing in that process?
There would be, yes. Uh, there would be, the, the planning commission, the planning commission part of the process serves as, as a public hearing. Um, in addition to that with, you know, either this type of change or creating a new district or those kinds of things, if there was a registered community organization, uh, there would be the requirement to meet with that registered community organization as well. So, um, you know, formal public hearing would take place at the planning commission, um, meeting with a registered community organization would be a part of that process as well. You know, at, you know, at minimum, um, typically, um, in these processes, uh, you know, there's a lot of, you know, I, what I'd say informal public engagement that isn't required by the code per se, but obviously is, um, you know, is done to make sure that, you know, this is something that residents want to make sure to see happen before we get to the legislative process.
Okay.
Councilman, do you have a timeline by which you wish to see this completed?
We had the public hearing November 4th, right? And then, you know, come back to council that November and passing it by the, you know, by the year.
Yeah, certainly by the.
Yeah, before the year.
Session, no, I would agree with that, yeah.
Man, I don't, if there's a question, good, you know, or a good concern that comes up, we should, you know, hold and, and continue to work through it. You know, but to your point, uh, you know, on the timeline, we should just, you know, some of the costs were mentioned here, we should just clarify. Maybe I have this wrong, that's why I want to clarify for the public, is that what we're doing here is really just to talk about how we're going to manage the program and how we're going to distribute who's been managing it, give it to others, you know, whoever that might be, and talk about that process of, you know, how that will be managed. Talk about these new ideas of, um, implement new, um, the possibilities of, of hybrid, possibilities of, you know, X, Y, and Z, but the actual cost of the permit will stay $20 under this, this, uh, this legislation and also that dynamic fee that, that you mentioned, director, would, wouldn't be in place with this, with this as well. So I just wanted to clarify that for the public unless, you know, I have that wrong for anyone, because, because a lot of people are concerned about prices as well, but this whole process right here that we're talking about, this bill we're talking about, only, um, separates the management of it and implements some new ideas.
I would agree with, uh, the, most of that, but my understanding or thought process would be that we are just, you're approving the designation and the process. The rates I feel should be, if this is approved, adjusted to the same time in the city's budget, the fee structure.
Yeah, and so that's, those fees, this, this also strikes that we have to, for the fee to change, it would now be in the fee schedule that's sent over with the budget, um, which is the, the great point, because that's what I want to lead to is that, um, you know, that's for our council to, to see and what will be sent over to discuss that and whether or not we approve, but that's outside this ordinance. And so we wouldn't have to change the ordinance every time, change those fees. I had another point on that, I'm forgetting it though, um.
And maybe the follow, a follow-up point to that is the present cost of the permits that is $20 for a permit has not changed since the inception of the program in 1981.
Exactly.
Because, because, because it has been, it, because it has been determined by code, uh, or it is, i- i- the fees have been solely in the code and that was part of the reason to be able to pull those fees out is that, you know, to change the fees would have required a change in the code. So what we did was, you know, we wanted to make sure that city council still had, you know, still had ultimate approval over potential fees, um, but that, you know, that that process going into the fee schedule kind of goes into the same way that we adjust other permit costs, whether that's permits that, you know, we have, you know, the Department of City Planning or permits, licenses, inspections due through the development, you know, through development process, uh, you know, those are all handled by the schedule that city council is ultimately the one who approves. And so we'd be doing the same thing with, with these permits as well, but not, like you said, not necessarily changing the fees with this ordinance.
And thank you for bringing up that point of how it's a 40-year-old fee that we see currently with $20. And to that point, you know, I know Gwen, you can speak to this, Dave, you can speak to this. Does that cover the program?
Absolutely.
A pr- a program that, a program that keeps, you know, tries to um, you know, manage commuters that will come into their their neighborhood and park for free. Does that cover the program?
It's covered for years, right?
Always a deficit, an annual deficit on the program.
Do you have a a sense of what that deficit is?
Off the top of my head, I don't want to state it. I could give that for you.
Let's just, I just want to make that known as we move forward.
I would need to just thank you for asking all of those questions because I literally have an email from a constituent sent at twelve PM or so today that said, please request at the post agenda to discuss the lack of self-funding, like how much the fees don't cover the cost of the program and the cost of not just the permitting, but also enforcement, right? So and so how this constituent is literally saying that this is really what we all need to keep in mind because the the really fees should be higher for these permits. So this is constituent asking, advocating for the permits to be more expensive, right? Um but given that she understands that probably a lot of her neighbors don't agree with her, but so we need to, we, you know, have the public when we see that is twenty dollar per permit hasn't increased since nineteen eighty one. Um we, it's obvious that the costs have increased and um we just need to bring them back in balance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Probably for clarification for the public, that's twenty dollars per year.
Yeah, right.
Per month, it's per year.
Thank you. I don't know, I'm sorry if I misstated that, right?
The program's always been a lost leader, always. That doesn't mean it has to continue that way. But I do, I do like the way it's structured. I have a couple of questions about it. I'm glad we had this discussion. Um but I do like the fact that we've separated the fees out, make them part of the fee schedule that comes over for approval of council. Um and I think, and Councilman, I commend you for your work is when, I I don't know that you know this, but when Patrick came into council before you assumed to see Patrick and I attempted, because Children's Hospital was being built and we attempted to wrangle this monster that had become RPP and we both surrendered. We threw our hands up and said, we don't know how to do this. But Councilman here had the, either the insanity or the courage to uh to take it on and and wrestle it, so.
Well, I mean, I have to, well, thanks, but I, you know, when I first came into office, I I just asked the director, literally like, oh, what are you working on? What are you doing? What are you, what's going on? And then it came out that this has been something you all have been working on. And so a lot of this came out of that work. Uh I just want to, you know, try to steward it forward and
Get across the
Get it across the goal line.
Yeah. We did significantly chop up some of the original districts, probably as a result of your other efforts. Because one of the first things that happened when I came in is we, Area A was in my district by children's. And that got divided up into three parts, I think, because it was so massive. Um and had, just had a lot more residents and a lot more permits. It was one of the areas that really had, there was a, there was there a black market trade because of the employees but wanting to buy people's permits. Yeah.
Director Lucas, thank you for for being here. I really appreciate, you know, everyone coming today. Uh I just wanted to give you the opportunity, if you had something that you wanted to clarify here before we adjourn this meeting. Unless so, unless other members had something to add.
I'm good, I'm good, thank you.
That's a lot of information. It's a big piece of legislation. Thank you all.
Yeah.
Um thanks for having me. My apologies for the confusion at the beginning, um and my not being here. That was the confusion for me. Um to the extent that DOME is being brought into this process, we had previously not been a part of this process is the Department of City Planning and of course, for the enforcement aspects, the Parking Authority. Um and pursuant to the conversations about cost of covering the program, we would need people. You know, if this is a new program area that the department will be expected to participate in, then we would need the staffing in order to do that. So just
There's a, there's a lot new, especially with the hybrid and everything that could come along and, you know, the management of those studies and everything.
Exactly. And I anticipate, once this has been refreshed and it's a more open process and there's more opportunity, that we're going to see more demand for RPP zones and more requests than we've probably seen before. Because now the barrier for entry, for making that request has changed with more opportunities. So I would expect the demand for city staff.
Yeah, thank you for coming and talking about that because that was one of the points that we had discussed and I said that I support, that we, you know, must support the program. Um where it's gonna, where it's gonna work. And so if it's um an additional staff member or we can see how that's going, I think it's necessary, you know, you know, part of this process.
Thanks for coming.
All right, well, thanks everyone for coming and having exhausted all the business that we've undertaken here. Meeting is adjourned.